Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Additions?
So a few. Don requested to be on the agenda, so he is under free request. Harry also requested that you contemplate the idea of an executive session to discuss a couple of items at the beginning of the meeting. Brook Hughes News has a change of schedule with yoga, which I can discuss later, and then I also wanted to talk to you guys about some external storage options for the computer, but we can discuss both of those later. So Harry and Don are the...
Can we... How soon would you like to do that? Could we... Could we do it? You want to do it right now, or could we just... Would it be all right if we did it before the unfinished business? Just went in and... We could go in the other room and discuss that because it has to do with the unfinished business, and then we could come back and reconvene. Thank you, Harry. I appreciate that. Okay. Introduction. We all sat with everybody. Minutes. How's everybody feel about the minutes? Everything seemed to be in order from what I read.
It made sense of my notes.
You and John did a nice job. Team effort. It was great. Felt like I was there. You did a great job with the minutes. Thank you. I almost contemplated not coming tonight just because you did so well.
Don't do that again.
I'm just kidding. Were you there last time? Okay. Let's see. You're right. You're not on there. I will add you. So enthralled.
Ah, might as well. I'll just sign.
It's not in my stack so far.
Maybe it has, but...
I figured we'd talk about it before we signed it.
Why? Pull it out if you want. If it's in there.
Beeler. Anybody like the minutes?
Yeah, nobody's done them yet. I didn't see anything wrong with it. Everybody else got through the minutes, or... Don made a motion to accept the minutes. Just printed. Anybody have any questions or comments? Do I hear a second?
I'm second.
John, second.
On favor?
Nine.
Opposed? Carrie. Don, you're up.
I'm going to be much lighter. We can reach and talk to this. Just did a little research. I'll tell you what prompted it in a minute. Cleveland? Now, tell you what prompted it. It's two meetings ago, we sat here and we talked about road conditions on Kelly Hill. And Keith said, "Well, we got to keep scraping down to get rid of the potholes, and the more we scrape, the less crown." But I thought it was interesting. He also mentioned that one time there were drainage ditches up on Kelly Hill. So I said to myself, "Well, okay." And as Micah said to me a year ago, you know, "There are priorities. We'll get to Kelly Hill when we can." So I said, "Well, how about putting a crown on it, even if it was with a little bit of gravel, and let's try some drainage ditches?" Well, okay. So Mike, I recall, said, "Don, no money. We're running out and what have you." And you told me that a year ago. You know, I'm pissed off. I'm just mentioning that. And that there were priorities ahead of Kelly Hill. Okay, so I basically said, "Let's see. What can we do to get more money?" Made a couple of calls. You have in front of you, I'm sure you're familiar with it, Vermont Better Roads is a state-sponsored program. And if you look at the figures there when you get a chance, you will see that Dambie and Rupert, whatever they're doing, they're doing it real well as far as getting grant money from the state. And this is not the only agency available, apparently, for grants. And as you can see, from the year 2014 to 2020, Dambie totaled $111,000, Rupert $155,000, we $59,000. And I think somewhat glaringly, 2020, with, I guess, a projected, we're in for zero, and on the year 2019, we were in for zero. Dambie got $20,000 that year. Rupert got $40,000 that year. So I'm saying, to try to keep this short, where is Mr. Tangerman in this process? Who in Politt is in charge of, if anyone, and I don't mean that slyly, if anyone is specifically, because in the other towns, there are two specific people in charge of going out for grants. And so my question is, who in our town does that?
Most of the backroads grants Keith always puts in for, and then whoever, Tim and now Kristen, has helped to do the paperwork on it.
Okay. And without perhaps going into what I didn't plan, any reason why we came up with goose eggs two years in a row?
Go ahead, please.
So every year, Keith and myself, well, in the last year and now this year, Keith and myself meet with Alan and Joel, or individuals from the grant, from the state, and they advise us in what to do. They help us walk through it. And there are certain criteria that we must meet as a town. And there's also levels in which we fall in terms of likelihood to receive grant money. And so this year, we were advised that we have done quite well in the past, and so they kind of...
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Where have we done so well in the past?
This was their advice to us. This was just my first time sitting in with them. I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm speaking. So this was their advice to us, is all I'm saying. So we can look into it and do a little bit better, but we take advice...
Okay. I don't mean to be, you know, what I'm saying is here is, I appreciate what you say, but somehow, Mr. Perrigo and Mr. May advised Rupert and Dambie that they were eligible for $20,000 this upcoming year and $40,000.
Yes.
And they advised Dambie, apparently, as you can see in the numbers, that they were in for $18,000, and they got $20,000 last year. So I don't understand why two neighboring towns, very, very similar, as you see on page two, as far as their characteristics, with roads paved, unpaved, why they are being more successful than we.
John?
You were going to speak, or?
I was just going to say that a lot of it has to do with the specific target that you're looking at and how the state ranks it.
And this isn't the only program...
I'm sorry, Mike. Explain the specific target.
Right. The project that you're working on and how the state...
Oh, I'm sorry. You said project.
I said target. The target project that you're working on and how the state ranks it. I know for two or three years in a row, we've tried to get a Better Backroads grant to redo the ditch up by the Little Red Schoolhouse up there, and it wasn't high enough on their priority list.
And also, there's a Better Roads Best Practice checklist, and I have it pulled up here right now. It's on the Better Roads manual for the year 2020. I don't know if you looked at that in your research. So there is a lengthy checklist with probably over a dozen items that we must make sure we have in line as a town with our roads before we can be considered. So I don't know about Dambie and Rupert. I don't work for Dambie and Rupert, so I don't know their roads. But I know that something that we, you know, and I don't know our roads as well as everybody else might, but I do know that there is a very specific checklist that we need to meet.
Well, I think there... Another question, Don, is the Better Backroads grant is just one portion of the grant money that we've received from the state. And that there are other programs, such as culvert programs, paving programs, that we may have chosen to participate in more than this program.
Excuse me. Have we chosen? Have we received funds for those?
Sure. Yeah, the paving we did in West Politt, the many, I don't know how many culverts we have done.
There's like...
And what agencies are those, as John had to say, away from this Vermont Better Road?
This is only one grant program, several that we participate in. So in order for us, I'm glad you did this. This is informative, but it may not include other programs that we have gotten grant money from.
And the other programs, for example, are FEMA and the Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program, which we just closed several out, which were well over $100,000 worth of funds that...
Okay, and I would dare suggest to you that Dambie and Politt and Rupert, I'll bet we go into those records, they also got a fair amount of FEMA money.
So at this point right now, Don, you've put a lot of numbers down, but without any seeing actually what they've done with their money, it's really kind of hard to compare.
No, it's in there. I, you know, I couldn't...
But what projects were these specifically targeted for?
Since Rupert, one of those years, it was to Roger Road, Rogers Road. If you want the specifics, you can go into the site. They will tell you exactly where the money went.
Right, but right now, I don't, it's hard for me to do this. Right, we did a project right over here on this road that was that grant.
No, I'm not asking you, Mike, to do it tonight. I just put this together. You go into that site, you will not believe the detail. They'll give you details as to where the money went, okay?
Okay.
So if you're interested, there it is.
Okay.
Now, as far as roads, Kristen, we have 22 gravel, 22 miles of gravel.
Actually, direct a statement, a question to me, and then if Kristen can answer, then I'll... Thank you.
We've got 20 miles of gravel road. Dambie has 26. Rupert has 22. So in answer to your question, I have, you look at the numbers on page two, you can see how much paved roads there are in our three towns, how much graded earth there are in our three towns, and what the total dirt mileage is in all three towns. And they're very close. Point being, I understand, John, there are other programs. Are they, is that, is that information open to public knowledge, which agencies you went to and what monies came from Politt?
Sure. It's as available as the figures that you got.
Okay, and where would I get that? I'm just asking.
I think the Department of Transportation would have that, and, or they could guide you to where.
Do we have it in our town here, though, as to what we received?
I don't know. We'll have to ask Keith.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike, just a few. Kristen said we got $100,000 from FEMA. We must have some public records here.
Oh, sure.
They would be in the treasurer's office, what we've got through the last years. And in the town report book, it spells out what we've got for grant money and stuff like that through the different grants we've participated in.
Okay, so that's available to the public?
Yes.
Now, my next question is, Mr. Tanger, have we approached it to help us with the grant situation? John, how many years did you serve up there?
Ten.
I thought so. So you must know the in and outs up there. Wouldn't you be a key guy possibly to...
Sure, and I'm sure he's working on it. I was...
No, I'm talking about you.
I was there when the depression happened, and people were getting a lot less money than they thought. In other words, some of our towns, the towns that I represented, got $90,000, $80,000, all depending on whatever formula it is. I can't tell you what that formula is. And per year, and all the things that that goes on, we can, if I have a minute, I'll look through the town report and say that. But any representative of any of towns keeps track of that and tries to advocate, either through the Rutland Regional Planning, through the Rutland Transportation Council, to make sure that their town is, or their towns...
I got all that done. I appreciate what you're saying.
Yes.
What I'm saying, I went back into your records, and you heartily underwrote, Mr. Tangerman. You have 10 years. You've got to know those guys out there. Maybe you can give Keith a hand in just pushing things a little bit, be a little bit more political than I may, John. Now, where is Mr. Tangerman and all that? Has anybody contacted him? I mean, he's your, I would not say protege, but you had some wonderful things to say about him as you were leaving, and rightfully so. And it just seems to me you could be a little bit more proactive on behalf of our town with regard to these grants. Now, I understand what Mike said. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I'm just telling you that some of these grants that you're looking at are only a part of the picture. We get aid from various different sources, whether it's FEMA's...
I understood that.
And we may have chosen, for the time being, to use state money for paving, and a lot of times, or these culverts. And a lot of times, when you use some of them, when it's most beneficial to eligibility, that then you end up at the bottom of the list, and you've got to work your way up as other towns become eligible. And so it...
Okay, I understand.
There's that.
I get your point.
You're just taking a snapshot on this, which is very good.
It's not a snapshot, John. It goes from 2014 to 2020.
I'm saying of the amount of money we get from the state for grants.
Okay.
This is just one program.
Okay. I would ask Mike, if you would, would it be possible for Kristen to put together a list of what grants we have received away from this that caused us not to seek the monies that Rupert and Dambie came up with? Would that be possible?
Kristen?
I don't know that that's a productive use of my time. Would you rather me look into grants that we could pursue moving forward? I'm not sure why we would look...
If you can't do it, you can't do it. But it just seems to me that I understand what John is saying. We went to other areas, and we've got money for culvert. I would dare say, if you want me to research it further, I'll bet Rupert and Dambie also went to other sources, which potentially could augment this $111,000 that Dambie received in this period, and would augment $155,000 of that Rupert received during this period. I can do that if you'd like, if you don't have the time. I understand.
I'm looking at page 24 on this year's town report.
Right.
And it said, "Actual revenue, we got $167,000 for state paving, bridge, and culvert programs. We got a FEMA grant for $131,388." That's a lot of money, and we may have chosen to do that, and now we're catching up on the backroads, when that FEMA money may not have been available in the future. We took advantage when that was available, too, because of Irene.
Well, I did a little looking at FEMA. There are a lot of towns that took advantage of FEMA during that period, John.
That's fine.
I'm just enumerating here. I thought it was outside the discussion I wanted to bring forth. But I'd be very happy to, if you would like, Mike, I'd be very happy to pull up the FEMA numbers and what towns received from FEMA.
So how can we, how can we take this information and move forward and make it better for our town?
I think we could be a bit more proactive, Mike. I just think, for instance, I'm going to give you a side here away from this, but can we keep the garage talk in the garage? Last meeting I was at, Bob, I love you, but you and Keith were going back about the bearing on the Easus bolt or the Schneefus bolt, and there was a discussion about money that we were going to be paying for equipment. It just seems to me the basis of that could have been discussed with Keith and yourself and whoever else talked about bearings and axles in the garage, and then certainly the discussion. I don't care.
But one of the unfortunate things is, most of the time, a lot of us only have this time to talk with Keith.
Well, it seems to me that they're not talking about being proactive, Mike, you know. Maybe you could do something away from this meeting, just to spare the public, which was about 20 minutes of talking about axles, et cetera, et cetera. I had no problem listening to, now, I, I think we have no problem listening to the fact that. I would invite over Keith, not you. We discussed what happened.
Okay. All right, all right. I'll shut you down right now because what I'm, what I'm seeing is you're telling me your side, but we have jobs. We work 50, 60 hours a week to support our families and stuff like that. We're not retired. So during Keith's normal time at work, we don't have time to just go over there and talk about the bearings or the $30,000 transmission that we just put in the... But right now, we need to focus on how we can take this grant system and make more money for the town. So why don't you come back with some grant options that maybe we overlooked or something like that?
I'm not on the talk board.
But you had... But you just had plenty of time to look this all up.
He has that experience in Montpelier. If there's anybody that can move forward, you would think you would not be looking at me, but looking to a guy that knows the state in and out, and Mr. Tangerman. Why me?
Because you had plenty of time to look all this stuff up, to say what we're doing wrong. I'd like to see how we can...
I appreciate you 50, 60 hours a week, Mike.
Right.
But don't be dictating to me what I do with my life when I'm retired, and therefore I have time.
Don.
I am trying to do something on behalf of this town.
Right.
Don, your time is up.
Are you with Don Keith right?
I am, and the time is up. Thank you.
Five minutes. Thank you for your help, Don, and we'll certainly not drop this subject. Announcements. Reports. Zoning Administrator?
I had no reports provided today.
No report? Okay.
Would this be the time to discuss advertising for...
Yes. Have you had any personal conversation with him regarding that at this point? He hasn't, he hasn't said anything like he's ready to step down, but we know it's inevitable.
No, other than what he told me email.
Right. And, but we know it's inevitable.
Yeah.
So... Harry is...
I did say, he said he was going to try to get here this week. I don't know how he was going to do it. Well, he was here last week, I guess.
Yeah, for the meeting.
I told him if he's in the office, I'd like to talk to him, or I'd go over there if he can't make it over here. But I'd like to figure, Brian, who he may, he may have some ideas.
If he knows, if he has some ideas.
I spoke to Ed Boe today, and he'd like to help us out, at least in reviewing, you know, our advertisement.
Right.
So I sent him, did I send you a copy?
You sent me a copy. Kristen, did you have a chance to print that so that other gentlemen here tonight can look at that?
The advertisement for his town's position.
For the new zoning administrator. It came in late this afternoon from Harry.
I printed, I only printed... Would you like me to make copies?
Yes, for the, for, please.
So I don't really know what the timeframe is, but from what the way he's been talking in emails, it sounds like he's only got a few months.
That's, that's what I gathered also. You concur with that. Gary said it was quite a... Right. But Gary said it was quite a noticeable change at the meeting the other night from what we've...
He's given up the other towns, Don, that he was working on, but he's going to continue with Politt, kill.
As long as he can. Okay.
Is this our zoning administrator?
Yes. Yeah, as soon as we're done with this portion, I'll bet before the zoning administrator report goes on. This is the letter that Harry's drafted.
Yeah, this is a draft advertisement for the zoning administrator's position, since the planning commission is responsible for making recommendations for this local... I'd like to see it advertised as widely as possible so we get a good cross-section of individuals. It's something Ed Boe said would help us out, too.
That seems to cover everything I think we need. Is everybody in favor of Harry passing that on to Ed Boe at the Regional Planning Commission and moving forward with, trying to gather some applications? Yes.
And would Deb be the person to...
Yeah, she will receive them and coordinate them and stuff.
She will support these things.
Right, and then bring...
Will we advertise?
And turn... If we might have advertised it in local papers or stuff like that, she would be the one that could handle that and any websites and stuff like that that Politt has. Right.
Who's that?
Elizabeth Gibson.
She had mentioned it, yeah. So if the board is in agreement with that, I'll talk to Deb and Elizabeth.
Yes, please do. Okay. Ashley?
The court decision was made, Kate, which put the ball back in your court. It's still this camera in view. Except, it's been three months. It does not take that long to, like, go ahead.
Right. I, I understand that, and I have been in contact with our legal counsel, who has been off for last week and this week, and she assures me that as soon as she's back, she will start everything in order, because of, she's helping Hal finish out the few things that he has on his plate.
First meeting after the court decision, when you put it back in your court.
We asked for...
You told me that if you were going to talk with this Merrill...
We asked for... We, we asked for interpretation from her, and, and I've been discussing it with her, and I've not got it back as soon as, as I had hoped for, and that's all I can tell you. But I have been in contact with her in regarding it, and that will be high on the priority list come Monday.
Thank you.
Planning Commission.
Okay.
Okay, there's some minutes from the meeting, I think, there, so, okay. Did you already tell us about that meeting, or? That's a development, oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
The July twenty-second meeting you told us about, all right, okay. All right. Road Foreman's report.
Well, we're still, we're in Rupert now.
You're in Rupert.
In the same ten, uh, probably another week, probably. The Dodge is a part, it's got some other things he wants to do, or is in there, some cooling lines to the turbo, and, uh, one of the coil springs down the front was broken and was sealed or set into the floor, um, due to the fact they've never been engineered or got it to do bolts and shocks, and, I mean, just because.
Right, he can't do one side without the other.
Uh, the turbo is pushing oil, so not excessive, but he said he just wanted us to be aware of that. He said, you know, there's no way to put a time on that, other, it's all right what it is, those deals are against, so, um, other than that, I think we're, send them over, Brian.
The, the grader's back. We see a bill for the grader.
Yeah.
I didn't see where there was any credit on that.
I didn't either.
That has.
Oh, there is. I don't think he was talking, no, the only.
Front page has two, two thousand bucks.
That was, that was core value.
Oh, oh, I see.
Core return, not, not, uh, not half the price, the way I read it anyways. I didn't see it until Julie showed it to me yesterday, but, uh.
You know, apparently, by changing that, we had to change the drive shaft and stuff on.
I, it was an upgrade, and it was more than I anticipated. He gave me a price, but that was on the transmission itself. I was not certain that there was going to be that much weight on top of it. You know, and he gave me the.
So this thirty-one thousand plus, what did we pay before to get the seal done? Ten?
Sure, yes.
It was what?
It was in that neighborhood.
Around ten.
I don't know exactly.
Lost nine hundred for transportation, twice.
Okay, so we put that much in a grader. Any idea what we're talking of putting in a Dodge that's wore out?
I don't, I don't know it.
Or should we be thinking about retiring it before we get dragged into that? Monstrous bill.
I'm, I'm open to that discussion, but I'm just, that comes from you, that is.
You're only talking a couple thousand dollars right now for the Dodge, right? Oil pan and.
Yeah, and some cooling lines go to the turbo.
Nothing major, nothing.
Probably closer to three with springs.
Yeah. Yeah, the suspension, that's fine.
How many miles are on it?
One hundred and fifty rollover.
How much?
One hundred and fifty thousand, one fifty-four maybe, but there, uh, the thing to keep in mind of that is that truck doesn't have an hour in it. If it compares to what we do on the other ones, we don't average fifty miles to an hour, we're down twenty and twenty-five, so that truck could easily have ten or twelve thousand hours in a hundred and fifty thousand miles. That would be comparable to what we're doing on the other trucks.
Yes, sir.
How many hours on the grader?
Uh, fifty-one hundred.
Okay.
Uh, new graders are about three-quarter mil.
Uh, yeah, I think the graders are the service of the unit, and then we sometimes do.
I'm just bringing that up, so that.
Comparative.
Well, I mean, this is, this is something they had problems with. If you talk around, you can, we're not the first ones to have this issue with your transmission.
With the grader. He said he, he changed that seal several times in his letter, and he's never had problems with it before, but.
Well.
Well, that, but.
There's, yeah, that's what he said, but it was the problem in the transmission, and still convinced that the seal problem and the dampener that he replaced the first time.
Absolutely, yes. So, well, unfortunate with five thousand hours and what is it, ten, fifteen years old?
Two thousand and three, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's long beyond warranty, so there's, there's nothing done, it's just the fact of owning, owning heavy equipment. We have to cover it.
Buying extended service plan.
Right.
In this case, probably worth my work, but in most cases, it's, you know.
Yeah, it's a, it's a gamble. Any, anything else? Anybody have anything to ask Keith?
Um, are you using the green dump in Rupert?
At times.
Have you walked around that dump truck lately?
No.
And what do you see missing?
One flap.
For how many days?
Well, it's been a while, but.
So we don't have time to put another flap on it? I mean, we can knock somebody's windshield out and then expect us to replace it.
Could happen, Chuck. It's been replaced a couple of times since we started driving, because when we back up to the pile and dump, and the stuff falls down, and you drive ahead, it pulls it off.
Uh, you gotta start out fresh every day, too. Gotta start out fresh every day.
I know, I know.
I know, I, I understand, but it, the DOT cop is not going to care.
I need, uh, I don't know, let me check David's, today.
In West Ballot?
No concern.
Even though we're not mining.
He just stopped in shop with us.
Yeah. Do you have any suggestions, or?
We stopped the bank towards the quarry with good time. We knew that, that's why we moved. We just basically extended to the end of where I prepped before we started. Um, and he wasn't there looking for us, he was there looking for Williams, and we were there, so we stopped him.
Yeah, since he was in the neighborhood.
But just sorry, if you've got any questions, you can call.
Whose little tractor is that parked there?
Their, yes, it is.
That's what I thought. On his way home and didn't make it, or?
No, actually, he's, some of that dirt was pulled out of there, and lined it up on his one ton.
Okay.
He's filling this ditch below his house.
It's something he asked us to do earlier, and he didn't get to it, so.
Don?
Just a good question. I think, I don't know if it was Christian or mentioned, or somebody here. Is there a daily log as to what these guys do, and it's available to the public, or I can get ahold of that? Like where Keith is working, what's going on? Somebody mentioned that, I think it was you, Chuck, something about Harrah Brook Road. You were interested in some progress, I think, two meetings ago or what have you. Somebody mentioned the daily log.
Timesheets say what project they're working on?
And that's available?
I suppose, yeah.
Time cards, the time cards are here.
I think we have a tax barrier from Harrah Brook that probably wants to speak to Keith.
I heard through the grate line that they were all done with Harrah Brook Road.
And we got.
Look at the end of my driveway. You gotta go up a bank like that to get on the road.
Okay.
When I first built the house, I spent thousands of dollars to get the same grade. I don't plan on doing that again.
Okay. The, uh, the slate work is done on Harrah Brook Road.
There's, there's more gravel that'll go out there.
So that will include repairing his driveway?
All of them.
All, all driveways?
Right, all, all the driveways.
I mean, come winter, I mean, nobody will be out even before we'll drive out the back up and get a long run.
Okay. All right, well, Keith has done all the rest of them. We, um, you know, if you're not satisfied, come back and let us know, and we'll work with you. But we're, but we haven't put the top coat of gravel on yet to finish the.
Oh, and you were talking about the sign they put on there for sand last year?
Uh-huh.
Must be all having mud go up the hill. I mean, Christ, you, probably will drag your all over and sand it after they sand it, you know, and you get a little sawed.
We are looking into other options for that this year.
Just want to add that.
Thank you.
What's the time scheduled to go back and do all the accesses?
Suppose we could go back and do them anytime, but we've got to find enough gravel to put on the top of, that's there. There, if we want, there's more gravel as well, we put on that what we had in our pit. That's where we are. And, and either other, what we said, some people.
Stanley have anything, or nothing either? And Holcomb is not hardly doing anything?
Nope, it's got a lot of stone up there. I mean, unless something has changed, and that's going to be, but there is no, no activity there, so.
Right.
So, winter sand, probably, like, stuff, some stuff, but no gravel.
Where does Rupert get their gravel from?
They lease a debt from Peckham and sell them in the yard. So they, I have somebody to crush it and pay for it, and then come in.
So we're looking at long trucking then, aren't we?
Yeah. And a little different product.
Right.
Which is all right.
Right, okay.
There was an old pit out by, in twenty-two, down by Kingdom Hall, by, towards the, you know, the east of the, even fire department, which, it might be something there that's still open up into there.
I don't know how New York State.
I don't think Chuck owns that anymore. That was his dad's, but I don't think he owns it anymore.
Right, he's not in it.
I don't believe so.
I don't know, there was some pit in, down off of Pine Hill Road, too, there was a pit down in there, something wasn't there for a while, but.
I don't know one, not that I'm familiar with.
Uh-huh. Well, but we, we got it. Right, no one's processing it for sale, so I guess we need to look at other options, like you say, either Wallingford or, or Hartford.
And they're looking, neighborhood of nine dollars a yard, and plus or minus, nobody wants to give you a solid price because they think you don't put it to bed, and they don't want anybody to eat.
That number.
Their number now, so.
It's around nine dollars a yard. So what would that cost?
Maybe slightly less, maybe slightly.
But what would that cost us to put sand up if we put?
Well.
That product up for?
I'd like to think we could use less if we managed to, you know, we have to.
Uh-huh, right, we'd have to.
Add expensive stuff, um, but I would think you'd want to just stay mine at twenty-five hundred gallons to start, and then get through the first year and move that to the ground, and that's what you should think about. And if you appropriate, you can take away from that number, if you go with some of the stone, like we have been adding in the past couple of years, you know.
It's, would, uh, like, how much is a half-inch stone product per yard?
Uh, seven bucks a ton for Wallingford.
Okay. I guess we gotta have that figured out here pretty soon then, don't we? Does anybody else have any?
They want to know, because they want to start to be real for that, either way, and whether they'll, I think they can fit you in, right?
What do we have for winter maintenance budget?
For sand?
For sand, yeah, nothing. We have a little bit of money for processing.
A little bit of money for processing, you know, salt budget.
It's to cover salt.
This would be an additional expenditure.
Twenty-two-five, Chuck just did the math. Okay.
Depending on the factory.
That's nine, that's at nine dollars.
Right, but that would, to budget that.
Right.
An other year would be depending on the tax rate.
That's not including the truck in.
Not including the truck.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Keith? Okay. Assessors' report.
You have two, there's the one individual page, and then everybody, I have another
At the BCA hearings, two taxpayers grieved their BCA's in, they ran the six. Received the review and final mapping changes from Cardiographic Associates International for 2019. We'll be updating the GIS mapping changes from our ProVal software as soon as possible in entering the PTTRs for the 2020. Equalization study, we're working on it with online sales validation through my VT, my VTACs in order to facilitate the equalization process that's used to calculate common level of appraisal and coefficient of dispersion, and equalized education grant lists to tax rate purposes and education funding. Office hours, least of scheduled office hours are August twelfth and twenty-sixth. Karen will be in the office five, twelve, and nineteen, and is necessary to keep current. Town clerk.
There's actually, so there's one more that was just left on my desk. I'm imagining it's from Karen. There's an email attached from Kathy Scully, and I can.
Learning Kathy Scully, yes, okay.
Um, mentions, this, this report just says, please see the attached email. The email mentions several failed attempts at connecting via phone, and there's a memo here that says regarding the phone messages, she let, never left a phone number. And there is an issue regarding taxation on a movable barn. And then it says, regarding the movable barn, also attached is the case of Sherburne Corp. versus Town of Sherburne, as cited by the Special Assistant Attorney General of the Vermont Department of Taxes. The case, for reasons cited, states that a shed is, quote, "an improvement to the realty and should be treated as real estate." The assessor's office has observed that the shed has not been moved since it was cited on the property.
This is from Kathy Scully, so they have something they need to work out there. What was she tried to do? She tried to, left two phone messages on extension board. So this is something that they got to handle, and apparently, huh?
You can add in the file if you think. Bob might want to read.
Want to read that?
He's mentioned.
Okay, town clerk's memo, assessors, okay, assessor's office. Okay, town clerk's memo, assessors, okay, assessor's office, that's on the memo. Julie and I were discussing the office of the zoning administrator and wondering if it would be beneficial to Hal to have an assistant or liaison to help keep him apprised of the day-to-day operations and incoming permit applications, permit, perhaps this has already been discussed and and you could update us so that we could directly, direct daily inquiries in appropriate direction. These are current, is currently an application that just came in and will need attention, so. At this point, we haven't, so, but Frank?
Would Karen, going the assistant on the praiser, be helping out with that type of things? Karen Holden?
I, I don't know, hey?
Last I knew, she had, already had a second job in Manchester.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Effective Monday, September ninth, I will be changing my hours on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, nine to four, same hours per day, but coinciding with Julie's hours, Thursday will remain nine to two, twelve. Uh, please sign cards for Hal and Karen as they return to either mine or Julie's desk, thank you, have a good evening.
Karen's mother died last week.
Yeah.
Treasurers report, there's four warrants to be signed, did everybody have a chance to look at the warrants?
Not yet.
I have not.
Warrants for me, I'll leave all down here.
Thirty-eight checks to be signed, fourteen payroll, and twenty-four accounts payable. I've issued payroll check for Hal for twenty hours, he has not submitted his hours, but I know that he was in the office for a whole day recently and put time and two town issues, I'll follow up on next payroll period for any adjustments needed. Deb and I have been talking, think it'd be beneficial to hire assistant zoning administrator to work with Hal as he focuses on his health to keep him updated with the with what's going on during his time, he is out of the office and that's the process we're starting right now. Taxes are starting to come in and already, to the office already, and so far, things are going smoothly. Vermont two and class three road payments came in at twenty-three thousand, six thirty-six, eighty-seven. The bill for the greater has come from NorTrax and was more than expected. Deb and I will both be attending a Vermont Municipal Clerks Treasurers Association Annual Meeting in September. The town has received a tax bill on the former Dutchies' property, Lisa's going to try and take care of it under errors and omissions so that we don't have to have an abatement hearing. I'd like to remind the board about personnel policies that were gone through so that the new policies could be signed in, in place in January. And VTums has set up an Amazon account for ordering the basic supplies for, using the town's credit card on the sewer plant, li, uh, the consumables, paper towels and stuff like that.
When you started Monday, you went...
Yep, nineteenth, yep. I met with them last Monday, I guess. Went over stuff and, so. That's, uh, seems to be, everything has fallen in place, she's reached out to Shay to connect him on the reports and stuff like that and Ian's been copied on some of the, the things and he's gonna be, he's gonna be giving them any guidance they need throughout the rest of the month and she said that this, this young girl is gonna be taking over Tracy Care, no, Carrie Tracy. And she'll be taking over and either, uh, Ed Savage or Jill will be down working with her to get her up to speed and stuff like that. And then we'll go through there. You guys are looking it over?
No. We signed the NorTrax.
Don't you sign?
Check.
You signed Chuck or?
No, I didn't. Because I have an issue with the NorTrax bill, doesn't show the two thousand. We signed the check for the full amount owed, how are we gonna get the two thousand credit back?
Absolutely.
She needs to put a note when she sends the check back. We expect the two thousand dollar credit. Or return funds.
I thought we, we, uh, I thought I asked her about that, but I, I can't remember now.
I hope the rest of the board agrees with me on that.
Let me just see if I can find something to do with that. I can't, I can't seem to find what I'm looking for, but I, I thought we had a... But you're absolutely right Chuck, without, without anywhere where it's, where it's spelled out. We need to find a, is it, where is it? Did she write, did she write the check out or not?
Well, I don't see it in here, when I signed them, I didn't notice it, but I was just writing them out, but, uh, that doesn't mean it's not, it's not here, but... Did you check, did you find?
I didn't, I didn't find it in mine.
No. Well, hang on. Go through that.
Okay. Did you read these out?
Hey, I didn't see it in my stack.
All that she says is the bill for the greater repairs come in from NorTrax more than expected. So maybe she didn't cut the check.
Doesn't look like it.
Well, it wasn't my stack, I'm checking yours.
Here's two that in the stacks. Two warrants.
Well, guess what? Out there.
Only bill we have is the one from Ray for the transportation for the nine.
Yeah.
So we have thirty days, so that means that it'll probably be in our next, uh...
Week.
Can you get these back?
Hope I did that right, you better give me that one back.
That was Karen. That was Hal. Okay, so we don't, we don't have that, and right now, we just got a mark on it that we didn't find the, uh... Plenty of time to straighten it out.
Is your check in there for me?
You mold your lawn yet?
Did we, uh...
You betcha, nor you, we're gonna do the same thing.
Are we gonna ask Julie?
I just put it in a, where's the credit of two thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Okay. So has everybody looked the warrants over?
Yeah, I make a motion to, oh, have you signed them yet?
I think so. Chuck, we have all four now? No, I got two back from Chuck.
Did you get the ones that I held back?
I just, I just passed two over to you.
You signed the warrants?
Two warrants. Where did they go? They're lost, I just passed you two warrants over Chuck, and now they're not.
How many warrants did we have?
There was four, and you only signed two, and I just handed two over to you.
You did?
Yeah.
You sure?
You handed back to me? What did they get stuck in with? Yeah, because now we only have two.
Most of the only two that you...
That I have here, because I just, I just handed two over to Chuck. I just pushed two your way, Chuck.
Oh, yeah. Mike, they're not here. We got these two.
There they are, right there, they're in the...
Well, say, each of you got two?
Yep. Two in each book. Somebody wanna make a motion to approve the warrants?
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants.
Any second on that? Chuck, you want a second warrant?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, Carrie?
Chuck, just chuck these to those two.
These, these two right here are the two that you guys signed, Chuck, you didn't... Emergency man, excuse, emergency management?
Bob told me that he discussed both of, or emergency management, emergency management and health director at the last meeting with you guys.
Yep.
Would meet another one.
Okay, so we're all good, wastewater, basically, they'll be taken over Monday and we'll work through this and go through and, and work up a list of emergency numbers like, uh, the electrician. I'll probably need to put him down, what's Art, is it? Yeah, I can, maybe you can leave a note down there or something. Because we were asking about that, I took him and showed him the two pump stations and, and everything necessary to go with that. And I know there's some work to be done with a couple of that, some of that too, the rails and up at Spooch Dummer getting bad or something, so that's gonna require some improvements. Frank?
Is, is that tax, uh, do the increase final or was discussed last night?
It's not finalized, yeah. So, we had Harry give us an opinion on the, the steps in the library, and he would like to meet with us and go over his opinion before we move on to older unfinished business, is everybody in favor of that?
Yeah.
Will we take it?
Could I mention before we leave, in the minutes, and I forgot to mention it, um, I don't believe there was anything in there or maybe there doesn't have to be, the time that Chuck left the meeting, last meeting or not?
I don't know if it's relative.
I didn't feel it was relevant.
Okay, alright.
Okay, so, yes, Don?
I covered an awful lot of ground and who's wasn't here, if you guys maybe discuss, will we talk about possibly crowning and putting granite stitches on Callagio, you can discuss that with...
We will.
He, he wasn't here.
Before, before you leave tonight, we'll have a little bit more of a conversation about that in this paper. Or at some point. Okay, so could somebody make a motion for us to go into executive session so we could discuss these, uh, library steps?
And I believe that in order for it to qualify for executive session, it would just be, the conversation would be regarding premature general public knowledge pertaining to the library steps.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
My, I want to further ask a question to Mr. Christian.
Yeah.
Do the Grove Department daily log, you say they were available or where, where am I right to buy them?
They are, I, um, I keep copies in my files and then I believe Julie probably also has them for, to do timesheets and whatnot. But I, I'm not sure if she has the same detailed logs that I have, so if you wanna work specific, you know, on certain days, you could send a message to the select board email and we could try to coordinate.
Okay, so we're doing specific information that we want to, uh...
Premature general.
Premature, okay. Somebody wanna make a motion?
I will.
Okay.
We're gonna go in the office for a little bit to discuss the library stuff, we'll be right back out as soon as possible.
Alright, well, we convene, um...
Did you, um, motion made to exit?
Yep, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, so we, we discussed this, our options and with the information we had gathered and what would the board like to do?
I would like to rebid the, uh, proposal for the steps in front of, uh, the library. Um, put it back out to bid the, uh, the original bids that we did receive, I think were much higher than what we anticipated, I'd like to, um, change, uh, work with Harry and, or whatever Harry would like to do and, uh, make some changes and, uh, put it out for, for rebid and hopefully we get prices that are more within the budget.
As a bid or time and materials?
Um, as a...
You can bid as time and materials.
We can bid it as, okay, so it will be a bid as time and materials?
Right.
Okay. Not to exceed, okay. Okay. So is that, would you be able to help us tune, tune that proposal, so by next, by next meeting and? Okay. Is everybody understand, everybody clear on what, what Bob is talking about?
Do we need that in a motion or?
I think it would be best.
Yeah, so, um, yeah.
You wanna read back what you, yeah?
So I've got a motion made to rebit, rebid the proposal for the library steps, working with Harry Van Meter to fine tune the, that's all I have.
What's, what's the word?
Bid proposal, bid proposal?
The bid proposal.
The bid proposal, okay.
You can call it a request for a proposal.
What's, uh, what's the September date, 'cause you aren't gonna put any, you aren't gonna contact these people apparently until the twenty-seventh?
It'll be the end of September before the, the bid, the bid is awarded. Because it'll be the, right, the... Because it'll be the, right, the first, the next meeting will be what, like the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-seventh.
Okay. And then that, that bid will go out, and give them two weeks to do that. Which puts us into where?
So the twenty-seventh, and then it will be the tenth?
September tenth.
September tenth.
That's when it goes out?
Well, hopefully we'll be able to go out and be able to...
Go out on the twenty-seventh, then we could decide on the tenth.
Ask for bids by the tenth. If we can turn that around that fast, before cold weather.
Well, the last time you bid, you, um, it was advertised in the newspapers?
Uh-huh.
And I think the town, didn't most of it on the town website?
Town website.
I think it was on the town website also, yeah, and...
On the website, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And so, um, the advertisement said to contact somebody in the town office, or to contact the architect? For, for the, for the, uh, request for proposal?
I believe so, I believe that's how it was worded.
Right.
That's the way it should be done. And then once you get some interest, then you...
Interested parties, right.
Then you, then you first, first them with the RFP, and then, since this date on the RFP is the one they come up with.
But now they shouldn't have to contact Ralph, should they?
No, no.
These guys, this is, this is out of his, I'm assuming.
That, that's up to you guys, I mean, you hired the guy as, as the architect, and there is drawings, it's best.
Yeah, so I mean, you know...
And if you're gonna go out for bid again, you should use drawings and specs that are his.
Exactly.
If you didn't buy them...
Exactly, but...
Then you void a service.
Yes.
Because it isn't, it's been a service.
Yes.
Well, you better find out from him if he's gonna accept cost plus.
Well, I'm just gonna say that's, you know, that's gonna be a whole other...
Okay.
That's a whole other deal.
So they're still, so they're still his specs? So we'd have to, we'd have to write a whole, a whole, a whole list of specs out for it if we, if we were just kinda winging it on itself?
They, they, that can go out as a, for a hundred, two...
But does he have to approve it?
Does he have to approve?
How does that, how does that work if he do the pick, you know?
Does he have to approve the list of bidders?
Yeah, or anything like that?
I wouldn't think so.
Anybody?
No, he wouldn't. If, once he got the million dollar...
Throw anybody in there you want.
Yeah, yeah. But just remember, the longer you draw it out, you're gonna be asking people to use those, that ramp in cold weather.
Yeah.
Which...
Okay. So does anybody wanna second Bob's motion?
I also wanna make sure that I have it worded correctly, so would it, would, and do you mind if I address to Harry since he's, just I wanna make sure that, so a motion made to rebid the library steps project, is that a, an appropriate way of phrasing it? Okay, working with Harry Van Meter to fine tune the request for a proposal. That is the motion.
Well, second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Oppose.
Two opposed, three in favor. Carried. All right, so that's that page. Next page. And that's the agenda. New business?
Got something. Sorry.
Oh, I got a call today, no hot water must be over the library, so take a look at it, see what's cooking.
Is that electric or gas, or fuel, I mean?
I think it's off the board.
Okay.
So... Brooke Hughes Muse, there's no more, she's noticed that there's not much interest for summertime yoga. I think that partially there was that confusion of just space layout with the art exhibit, and then that kind of, you know, trickled off attend, that postponed attendance, and then now she said she went back in for her first class of August, and she found that with her students, there was no more summertime interest. So she's requesting a refund because she's not going to do any more classes throughout August and September as she had planned, and then will revisit for the winter months. So since she did use the space this past week, she was wondering if she could request a refund of twenty dollars for the remainder of August and twenty-five for September, which she had already paid, resulting in a refund of forty-five dollars.
Now, has she moved over to Rupert, to the house over there, or with her?
Oh, I have no idea, I didn't get anywhere.
Hot yoga, it's hot yoga.
Oh, well, whatever.
Different, different offering perhaps. But, I mean, I know, just, I'm also a yoga teacher, and I understand how you host these classes, and you make yourself available every week, and there's nothing quite so bad as paying to utilize a space, and you show up and nobody else does, and that doesn't feel so good. So, and I, and I can understand that, you know, people get used to a schedule, so if, so if folks were intending to come through July and they weren't able to, and she just said that she, her email was very amicable, she just stated that she didn't feel it would be...
I, I don't see any reason why not. Anybody else have any?
Nope.
Okay, so you can just pour that onto Julie.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, um, the other one, so for the backing up of the computer after the last meeting, we had talked about, you know, making sure that this was backed up, and I myself had an external hard drive that I was planning to just devote to this, and then, you know, if, if ever there came a time when somebody else needed it, I would just pass it along and donate it to the town. And it's super old, and it unfortunately doesn't work as what I can tell. I was going to ask John Weiss if he could confirm, because he's techie and my friend, and I thought he could help, but if, for whatever reason, it actually is fried, I was requesting permission to work with Julie on the computer budget and see if I could purchase some sort of a small external hard drive. And I looked around, I'm just not sure of how much capacity I would need, but they range, I mean, anywhere from twenty dollars to about a hundred and twenty dollars, I think, for what I, I just am not sure exactly of what I'd need. So I was going to put out an email to John Freed to see what he might recommend for storage, but I know it's important, so I was just looking for your blessing to move forward.
That seems like very wise, we don't need to be trapped again like we were before.
Yeah, so, again, my first step will be to have John Weiss take a look at my current hard drive and see if he can make it work, and from there I would ask John Freed what his opinions were, and then work with Julie on the budget and see if, and of course I'll keep you posted along the way, but...
Frank, you got one to donate?
I did, I have computer consulting for GE for a bunch of companies around here, backup scene was difficult, they had at least two different backup disks. One you would back up to, and then the other one would deep rock that one and back up to that one, so that, and some kind of more disks, so that you had, you had at least a grandfather, parent, child backup, at least three. But you can do it with two, one, you're always risking that drive failure of the backup in the system, where you have the third one or the fourth one, if, you know, the three backups through. And you can do that cheaply with the, with the flash drive, and if you're doing documents and stuff, you don't have, you know, it's not pitchers and all that.
Right, that's it.
You're not gonna have that much capacity, there is any reason why you couldn't do that for under a hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Excellent. Anything else?
Not for me.
Is there any new business out in the audience? Public comment? Frank?
Rick, um, I was up in Kales, Vermont, a lot of dirt roads in North Mountain Villier, and they have, uh, obviously projects, they're working on their dirt roads all the time up there. I think it probably gravel, the long-term, going warming thing with this, with this dirt road situation, it's probably not gonna get better, it's gonna get worse. And maybe, uh, maybe, uh, in conjunction with other towns, and with legislative, legislative people, if they work on a long-term plan of dirt roads, uh, which is going to address the, the form of, versus, versus, uh, you know, we used to have pros of roads, but you're not gonna have that part in the future.
Thank you. Okay, one last thing that I almost overlooked, is that our, our small claims court case is being reviewed by the attorneys, and feel that it's just kind of, he said that, it appears that it's just some way of trying to get back at us for denying his court case. Uh, his B O, B O A, Ward of Adjustment Abolment? Yeah. That's what he's, that's what he's calling out. Rob Wilmington had answered in, uh, in Merrill's absence, but she did get back to me, she said she was on vacation for two weeks, and when she got back, she would deal with that, and also the per him case, so... So we gotta determine, I believe we'll have to deter, set a rate for violation. Because if we send them a load, a, a notice of violation, there'll have to be a rate attached to it, a per day rate. That we don't have established at this point, I don't believe, correct, Keith? Right, we've never had, we've never had an established rate of, for a notice of violation.
The established rate that I think you have is that if you start your construction prior to giving the permit, pay double the permit cost.
Right.
And zoning regulations, that's the only fee that I'm aware of.
Right, and I know Hal had mentioned that earlier this year, that, that should we have to, um, find someone in non-compliance, we don't have a rate established, so we'll have to do that. And... So that would put it two more weeks out, wouldn't it? If we don't, if we don't have a rate established at this point for non-compliance, that will put us, put us farther out, um...
Kristin could probably get some samples from VLCT as to what other towns are doing, and that would give you some kind of reference to nation decision, huh? Excuse me.
So that's, that's where we're at with that. And I will keep, keep you posted, anything else? VLCT, part of the town fair. I guess the annual business meeting. Anybody wanna go to the annual business meeting for the VLCT? Be fun. Okay.
Should we bring, do we, would we like to bring Keith up to speed with what he missed?
Yeah. Yeah, we might as well do it during the open portion of this meeting. Did you see the paper from down the chair or not?
Uh, no, I just came in to say I wanted to...
Yeah. And his, he doesn't understand why Rupert and Danby got so much more money and grants than we didn't get nothing the last two years.
Well, we applied, and they didn't...
They denied us.
Denied us, so we applied over by all Ferguson's.
Right, I brought that one up.
We did not meet the criteria, which are eligible over there, and... What other one did we apply for? There's another one somewhere. I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but, uh...
Did we not apply for anything this year, or...
Just the grants and aid program.
But we've made out really well with Blacktop several years running here, and...
Some of what their grant money they're receiving is, it's all based on the BMP, it's best made in their practices that are written into the new legislation, which is largely stone-like and ditches. The, uh, you remember the grants and aid program that they gave us money for the class four road? Well, that kind of switched around, but I was able to roll it into the spot in Jimmy Ross's pond, and the spot in Verma Pool past Ronnie Morris's driveway, so we got that coming. And we just rolled the class four section over in the next year. But that's, uh, that's one of those grants that needs to be applied for to finish up down below, what I'm rich roads on the south end of the...
So I was gonna ask you about that.
That's a connected road, it, the road follows it, and it certainly should be eligible if we're not...
Are we able to apply for that grant at this point, or is it...
As far as I know this year, those grants haven't been released.
Although, 'cause when I went on the website, it says that the FY twenty, um, allotments or awards, there's, there is an S F Y twenty twenty grant award list that's out there. But I never, I mean, I can comb back through the email, but I kept a close eye out for the invitation to apply. I mean, I can...
No, I don't, I think they sent something out back at the beginning of the year that said they haven't, didn't have things organized yet, and they were adjusting, you know, part of it was this...
What I thought.
...aid program that they implemented. I will communicate with you in a little bit.
Yeah, Keith and I will, that was kind of on my ass to see if you and I could get to it.
Yeah, I mean, uh, and they're, they lost their field rep that, that came up here and met with us.
Oh, really?
John was there that day.
A lady?
Yes, she moved on, and Alan is still there, and, um, and that will be where you will reach out and find out what's going on. And see, with that, I think next year's grant opportunities will come out this fall, and, um, we've applied them, and that's, that's the big one down there, and so, um... But Keith's correct, we just, well, that money that we just rolled over here will be on it, I don't know exactly how much it is without looking at it, so... It depends on, completely on what project you have and what's going on. That was the reason John, we met him up here, was to try to convince him that putting this thing out in the road qualified, and we did get that approval, that's why they allowed us to do that over here on the connected segments of Harris Brook Road.
I guess I've, I've gotta ask what is meant by, on the second page where he says we have twenty miles of gravel and seven miles of graded earth? And all it... We have twenty-eight miles of paved roads, twenty miles of gravel roads, and seven miles of graded earth, and then one mile of untraveled dirt. So, is that class two, class three, and class four? Is that the definition, is that how he's defining?
That could be, we have twenty-eight miles of paved, you got Route thirty, and one thirty-three, and one two.
Right.
We have twenty-six point something miles of dirt road, class four, just under fifteen, plus class two paved, and then we have one point something miles of class four with his checkered road.
Right.
Stretch up on the end, but, so yeah, no, it's...
How many of dirt, twenty-six something?
Twenty-six point seven.
Well, anyway, I mean, I didn't feel that I could emphasize, I wasn't, I was confident in what your answers would be, but I didn't feel like I could say that we have made out very well with our paving grants and everything else, so therefore, and our culvert grants have really come through and everything, so therefore, you know, we, we haven't made out very well with some of the other grants, but they kind of keep track of who needs what, and if our emergency situations are in pretty good shape, and maybe Rupert and Danby's weren't, where they needed to... Danby's weren't, where they needed to keep from, the Brook Road from eroding away and stuff.
Well, they've stoned Lily Hill, the ditches there. They've just got, they've just got done, called, they've just got done, yeah.
I actually talked to Larry the other night, and that's what they've been done, but they, that's...
Stoning the ditch doesn't do much for driving, right? I mean, it, it doesn't improve the driving surface, I mean, it helps...
To BMPs, there's criteria for size of the stone based on the slope of the road that would be needed. A lot of our issues are not even on the hill, so to speak. Like Rupert Mountain up here could qualify for some stone lined ditch in places, but if ditch is adequate, we're there in Culver's, we don't need stone lining. And then, you run into a problem managing the stone in the ditch. Their plan is to take it back out of the ditch, screen it, clean the ditch, and then reapply the stone at a later date after it's famed, which is, you know, um...
So got a monkey in round?
They're giving the grant money to put it in there, but I don't know that they're going to pay you grant money to go through that process when the time comes, so...
The silt could be coming from up above before it even gets in the ditch.
Exactly. So the silt that goes through the culvers, past Ronnie Morrison's, and down into that west, comes from over that by Bob Ebleyn's. You know, I...
But they did, they did line part of it up by the letter S, which always washed out, and that's been holding.
That's a perfect candidate.
That's, that's been holding. It's working fine, super there. That's...
That's how it...
What's that, Danby?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we know what's going on, we know what he, what about crowning the road up beyond his house there, where his family lives there that was...
Well, that and put a ditch on her, ditch up, or clean the ditch, whatever.
Is that...
Get rid of it.
Where is he?
Up the road a little bit? I don't, I'm not familiar with any of that territory over there, but...
Isn't it just the side of Kelly Place, where the...
Where that guy and the lady?
I'm not positive, but...
Oh, Mike Westone has his own wheelies on.
Okay, so, so you said that the ditch has gotten kind of filled in, and the road has lost its crown, and...
There's very little ditch there.
The only way to make...
We're worried about where that picket fence is.
The only way to, the only way to make it is to, is to build the road up, right? There ain't really, ain't much cutting or crowning of the road.
Won't that just flood his yard?
I don't really even know what condition that timber is, but there is a couple of small culverts there, probably could be replaced and upgraded, and, um, you could roll that side in right back to that picket fence and scoop it up all the way, and that would be your ditch, but what they're, what they're driving on is, you know, they're driving on what used to be the ditch.
What used to be the ditch, yeah.
You know, same as your road, right? That was a narrow one lane road with two ditches, even though they were depressed, but now you guys are driving on the whole thing, and we've taken what material was on it, widened it out, three or four feet on each side of the original road without adding any significant amount, and...
Right.
Does, does Kelly Hill apply, or is it eligible for a Better Roads Grant?
I would have to look at the map and see what's connected there.
Because I think that would be...
The David Brook Insurance is connected, and the other little Brooks there, I don't, I would highly doubt that that stretch he's talking about is, uh, is a connected road. Probably is not.
That would be an interesting, I mean, just something to, I think...
Go answer that.
When this comes up again, you know, when we focus on the Better Roads Grant, it could be interesting to know that actually, this is all good information, but your road does not in fact qualify for this grant at all, so we can look into other ones that would. Just because I'm all about, if there's a problem, I'm totally fine with people presenting problems, but not without a solution, that it's important that, you know...
I agree. Anybody else have anything else that they want to talk about tonight, or?